On April 1st, 2021 to order. I'm seeking approval of the agenda with as amended.
So may.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Listen, favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, the virtual presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance is from North Buncombe High School. The instructors are Commander Master Chief Edward Moreno, U.S. Navy retired, and Captain James Sullivan, U.S. Navy retired. Please arise.
Colors, attention. Carry. Colors. Ready, cut, forward, march. Colors, halt. Right wheel, march. Forward, march. Colors, halt. Present. Colors.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Red, cut, counter march, march. Colors, halt. Right, face. Forward, march. Colors, halt. Fall out.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. May be seated. Public comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have four public comments signups for this evening.
Thank you.
They are getting in position at this moment. All right, we'd like to call our first public comment to the room, please. If you can start with your name, where you're from.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ren Vallee, and I'm a senior at Nesbit Discovery Academy. I will read from the Buncombe County Board of Education's Governing Principles as stated on their website. School initiatives. In a system of excellent schools, each school initiates improvements to the educational program and services for students and involves staff, parents, and students in school-level decision-making processes. The decision to remove asynchronous Wednesdays was made at a specially-called meeting with no posted agenda that did not allow public comment. This meeting was after a regularly scheduled meeting where removing asynchronous Wednesdays was on the agenda. At the meeting, students, parents, and faculty emailed and spoke in favor of keeping Wednesdays asynchronous. These actions have made a mockery mockery of your governing principles by actively going against the feedback of the community. I will read from the governing principles again. Student success. As its top priority, a system of excellent schools provides opportunities for individual students to succeed and overall student performance to improve. Taking away asynchronous Wednesdays is a gross bastardization of the board's number-one governing principle and top priority. Wednesdays offered kids chances for clubs, to catch up on work, and even come into school or attend Zooms to get extra help. They offered a break in the monotonous stream of school Zooms and assignments for kids to cultivate interest and alleviate some of the stress. This is what brings individual student success and improves overall student performance. A jarring switch to five days a week against everyone's wishes and best interests will only worsen students' grades and motivation. As the school board, it is your job to create the best learning environment possible. It is your job to ensure students have the tools they need to succeed. Taking away the students' chances to engage in extracurriculars and receive help is completely counterproductive to this. You should be focused on giving kids a place to build skills and become well-rounded people. Your job is to protect and help the students and teachers in Buncombe County. Not remove opportunity for them as a means of helping the economy and bringing back glorified childcare. For the best interests of students, teachers, and other faculty, bring back asynchronous Wednesdays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call our next public comment, please. Again, please start with your name, where you're from, in about three minutes.
All right. My name is Bailey Smith, and I'm a senior at Nesbit Discovery Academy. I am here talking about the topic of asynchronous Wednesdays. Asynchronous Wednesdays are a way to provide students with extra time to work on schoolwork and is considerate of the circumstances of the students, especially during these difficult times. While preparing for college, many students have jobs to help pay for their college or extracurricular activities to maintain a stable mental health state amidst the pressure of school, sorry, and the tension of the pandemic. Although some students have time after school to work on schoolwork, papers, and projects, many students feel that they don't have enough time. Having asynchronous Wednesdays is absolutely necessary for all students because it allows them more time to be productive and produce schoolwork efficiently. It also eases stress from external factors that may inhibit their homework time. Asynchronous Wednesdays are also used to help those who really need it. An incredible amount of students struggle in school generally, but especially now when the natural flow of school has been disrupted. During asynchronous Wednesdays, these students were allowed to come in for safe, in-person, one-on-one training and tutoring to help with these classes. Now that asynchronous Wednesdays have been taken away, the ability for these students to get the help that they really need has been taken away as well. Teachers are also positively affected by asynchronous Wednesdays. These days are often used by teachers to help alleviate the stressors that accompany grading and gives another day to catch up on grades rather than having to do it over the weekend impacting the much-needed break needed for our hard-working staff. And not regarding school whatsoever. If a teacher's grades or a student's assignments are all caught up, asynchronous Wednesdays are a wonderful little break for everyone. Teachers, staff, and students are able to take this time to enjoy their day, relax, and not have to worry about school during the pandemic, which is definitely difficult for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call our next public comment, please.
My name is Aria Williams, and I'm here on behalf of the B.C. Student Coalition. I would like to start with a statement that one student shared with us. Quote, "I feel like students, teachers think that we have plenty more time in our lives, so they have been stacking assignments on us way more than usual. Some teachers have done this and others haven't, but it still puts much stress on students because the only thing we are really learning is how to type fast or to get assignments in. The teacher or the system needs to be changed so that there aren't as many assignments constantly due, but more learning opportunities that will help students grow," end quote. This student's words capture something that I and most others have felt throughout my school career. In order to keep up with all of my work, I had to just go through the motions of assignments without actually learning, but this was rewarded because it was the only way I kept up my good grades and managed to balance a life outside of school. This year, asynchronous Wednesdays provided a reprieve from the constant overload of schoolwork, and it allowed me to have an opportunity to connect with teachers and students. I, like many other students, relied on this day to catch up on work, have meetings with teachers or my peers, and sometimes simply to rest, which is just as important for my ability to succeed in school. The removal of asynchronous Wednesdays is a reflection of the core of many policies issued from this board, as well as the state and federal government. Economic interests are put ahead of the health and well-being of our students, staff, and community. Making this a prep change in the middle of the semester will do little more than disrupt the flow that we have adapted to and further overwhelm students and teachers. Clearly, economic costs matter more here than what is best for students' educations. The push for a return to normal neglects the reality that our educational normal was built on burnout students, overworked educators, and false qualitative measures that neglected real learning. This pandemic has solely exacerbated the pre-existing problems which plague our education system, but it also can be an opportunity to restructure in order to meet our current needs. Asynchronous Wednesdays are critical to students, faculty, and we need them now and in the future. Even if this plan does not work for our youngest students, it is important for grades six through 13. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready for our next public comment, please.
Standby.
Standing by. The larger group that is breaking into smaller groups, so there will be a couple more.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Parsons. I live in Kandler. I am here to discuss not only the fact that children are being forced to wear masks against their will, against the parent's will. It's going against the executive order, which states that you have your First Amendment right, which is religious exemption. You also have a medical exemption that you can utilize that is not being utilized by the parents or the teachers and the school board are not letting people use those exemptions. Also, OSHA 20 CFR 1910, if you all can look that up, you are not even doing the masks per the actual OSHA regulation. So you have to actually be fitted for a mask. It has to be a N95 mask, and every single child would have to be fitted every single time that they come into the school, every time they take it off, and it has to be that specific mask. So you all are not doing the regulations per OSHA standard, one. Two, there are children with medical exemptions, like Everett Patillo's child, who has autism and is non-verbal, has now started having seizures again when she was only having seizures once every six months. She's having them many now, and the reason why that is is because she's being forced to wear a mask. What a mask do? They put your body in an acidic state. We are to breathe in oxygen, not carbon dioxide. These children are breathing in carbon dioxide all day long, and now we're talking about forcing people with vaccines? Vaccines are biological toxins. That is literally what they're classified as. You cannot force any human being, especially children, against their will and not ever consenting, letting a child of the age of 11 or older, or I mean younger, to consent to getting vaccines without their parents' consent. So you guys swore an oath, every single one of you, correct? You're elected officials, correct? I'm asking a question. Shake, head shakes, whatever you need to do. Yes, okay? So when you swore an oath, would you swear an oath too? That's a question. All of you can answer it. What did you swear an oath to when you were elected? Does anyone want to answer that question?
Madam Chair, as board members are aware, this is public comment, not public.
Okay. Well, that oath was to the Constitution. That means that the First Amendment, your First Amendment rights are extremely important. You all work for us, we the people, the taxpayers. There's no more of you all telling us what we can and cannot do with our children. We will utilize Section 3 of our Constitution, and we will abolish your governance, and we will institute new governance that is constitutionally sound. I'm putting you on notice every single.
Thank you.
Are we all ready for our next public comment? Hold our next public comment. It takes just a moment. I'm sure you heard me, but we are ready for our next public comment. That actually will be our final public comment of the evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are superintend-- I'm sorry, are the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by recognizing the dedication and vigilance that we have seen across the district for respecting the COVID protocols that are in place within our school buildings and classrooms. As you are aware, our middle and high schools began operating on Monday of this week under Plan A, in-person instruction. For students and staff in our K through three schools, this was actually their fourth week of Plan A. Especially for our classroom teachers, support staff, and school leadership, my hope is that each and every one of you enjoy an extremely well-deserved spring break ahead. Later in our agenda, I will be excited to hear announced the seven district teachers of the year. This annual process begins by showcasing our top classroom teachers as recognized by their peers in each school. From this list, one distinguished teacher is selected by a system-wide panel of educators for each of the six districts, in addition to a seventh district made up of our non-traditional schools of choice. From these seven representatives, one BCS teacher will be announced at a later date as our district-wide teacher of the year. And I see Mr. Rhodes in here in attendance, who is our current district teacher of the year. While the teacher of the year process has proven to be such a significant event in each year past, this recognition during a full year of facing the COVID pandemic, I believe, takes on a special meaning and importance. Speaking of spring break, which begins on Monday, the 5th, I want to encourage everyone within the BCS community to remain diligent in observing the full range of preventative measures to curb COVID transmissions. As I visited our schools this week, a common comment from teachers and staff was how glad they were to have their students back in the classroom. In order to continue in Plan A and complete the final two months of the school year without interruptions, it will require a unified commitment from everyone to help prevent the potential for any spike that can result from relaxing habits, especially in social settings. The three W's remain important: wear your mask, wash your hands, and wait to observe distance. And in closing, a reminder that tomorrow will be an early dismissal for students across all of our campuses. And that concludes my comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. At this time, it's, we are ready for the curriculum feature, and that's with Suzanne Swanger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. Dr. Baldwin said it beautifully. It is an exciting time of year because we have and are going to share who the district winners are for our district teachers of the year. There were seven selected from our 44 schools, chosen by their peers. And what a big, big recognition and accomplishment to be recognized by your peers. The committee so far have read the essays, and these essays talk about the experiences of being a teacher, their journeys, what the successes they've had, what their dreams and aspirations are. They have been virtually interviewed, a little bit different than in past years because of the pandemic, but the committee has really pivoted to make sure that they have adjusted in their scoring and their interviewing and their next steps of narrowing down the field to the teacher of the year that will be announced in September, as well as the Ruth Henderson Award. So what's next for these district winners? After this evening, they will prepare their portfolio during the summer according to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction information, and they will deliver a speech and classroom visits. So we will all be anxiously awaiting our September decision. But tonight, we're going to celebrate these seven individuals and their accomplishments. And again, thank you to the committee for your work, and thank you to two of our superstars, Ms. Delana Parker, who is our 2020 Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Jason Rhodes, our 2021 Teacher of the Year. So Delana, come on up.
Thank you. So one of the things that's great about being a teacher are those rare moments that we get to go into people's classrooms and share ideas and just see how everybody does things. Teachers are so busy that we often don't get to do that, but it's an awesome thing to be able to just get new ideas. This is the best county, I believe, to work for, and we've got some fantastic teachers. So when you're voted Teacher of the Year, one of the things that you get to do is you get to meet these fantastic teachers and listen to their passions. We'll get to go into classrooms this year and just see some of these wonderful teachers in action. And so while being Teacher of the Year has been a great honor, it's really just been very fun and exciting to meet all of these people. So I'm excited tonight to help our 2021 Teacher of the Year to announce these seven district teachers. It's been great to meet them and to hear these interviews, and I look forward to reading more from them. So I'm very happy to introduce Jason Rhodes, our 2021 Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Swanger. It is an amazing honor to be the Buncombe County School Teacher of the Year, even in this year with no banquets, no ability to get together with people outside of the home to celebrate, in a year beyond tough, beyond anything that could have been imagined just a little over a year ago. I hope I've risen to that challenge to try and meet the needs of my students, and I definitely have seen teachers who have risen to that challenge in this process. I've been fortunate to be a part of this for a few times as a facilitator and now as a committee member, and always come away feeling inspired by our teachers. I'm always impressed by our schools, the way they care about the students, the families and the communities that they represent. Being part of this is made for a bright spring, seeing all of the great things going on. We began this process with teachers announcing winners in their schools. I think for many teachers, this is the highest honor because colleagues know who we are, know our impact on our students, our schools, and the community. From over 30 essays about teaching philosophy and educational challenge, we narrowed it down to 20 teachers to interview. In normal times, these teachers would have come into the central office, and we would have sat around a table, and we would have gotten a glimpse of who they were from their words and actions with us and the words written on the page. This year with Zoom, we got to see teachers leaving the soccer field from practice, dressed as a leprechaun for St. Patrick's Day. We got to hear the noise of the bus rider announcements in the background and to see just a small window into classrooms where all of these wonderful teachers do wonderful things. One of our interview questions was about a success story, and their answers were as diverse as they were impactful. Our teachers make home visits, reach out in myriad ways to support those who need their help the most, and work to learn new methods to better reach students in a completely digital age. age. They teach kids to read, and not just in kindergarten. They teach their students to tie their shoes, create websites, and teach themselves Spanish and Russian to better communicate with their students and their parents. I heard so many wonderful answers, but one of my favorites was, "I would hope to have success with every kid I come across," and I think that sentiment sums up this group of teachers. So even though our celebration is muted a bit this time around, our applause coming from an almost-empty boardroom, this is a tough ticket to get, and the celebration tomorrow at school constrained by a little social distancing and masks, the crop of teachers this year is extremely special. Just think, in the worst of all school years, in the toughest of times, your colleagues saw your work and said, "That's the one. That's the Teacher of the Year." Doesn't matter that kids are in our buildings a few days, and then maybe not the next. Doesn't matter if you're teaching from your couch, barefoot and shorts. We're now in a room with little masked kindergarteners or seniors in masks in your room and on their computers at home. You are the ones who stood out above all the rest, a COVID-year Teacher of the Year. What an honor. I am proud to work in the same county with all of you. All right, so now to the big moment. May I have the first envelope, please? So our winner from the Roberson District is Richard Rookie from Valley Springs Middle. Our next district winner from the Reynolds District is Maggie Harvin, Fairview Elementary. Our next winner from the Owen District, William Honie, WD Williams Elementary. And from the North Buncombe District, Jennifer Shelley, Weaverville Primary. From the Irwin District, Jordan Brashler, Clyde Irwin Middle School. Have to draw this out just a little bit. From the Anka District, Caitlin Brashler from Pisgah Elementary. And finally, from the At-Large District, the winner is Aramie Moore from Community Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Baldwin, I have a thought, and it related to, it was triggered by this, but we've had a year where we've really not been able to recognize, for example, our National Board Certified Teachers and Teachers of the Year and District. If it's possible, if next school year is a more normal year, I think it would serve this board well to have maybe some, bring some of those folks back that we didn't get to properly see and hear from and celebrate during this school year, if we could do that.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion.
I agree. We'll see if we can put that into play. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Action Agenda, and the first item is the 2020-2021 Budget Amendment Number Six. Do board members have questions for Ms. Frisby? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to, did I miss a comment? I would entertain a motion to approve this budget amendment.
So moved.
Thank you. I believe that's a move and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The next item is the recommendation for the audit firm for years ending in June 30, 2021, 2022, and 2023. Are there questions for Ms. Frisby on this item?
I have one. It may or may not be for Ms. Frisby, perhaps best addressed to the board attorney. Can you, I think I understand, but maybe for the public's well-being as well, help, because the recommendation was not for the low bidder, and can you explain how we in fact can do that should this board decide to adopt the recommendation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bryant. The low bidder standard is typical for construction or purchase contracts. It's not something that you're bound to follow for professional services, and very often in professional services, you don't get the best service for the lowest dollar. So there are, in fact, there are some services, like architectural services, where it's basically illegal to make a choice based on a low bidder. So it's, I don't, it's very common for districts to make a selection for a professional service like that that's not based on a low bid standard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I believe that's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. School calendar 2021-2022, are there questions for Ms. Swanger? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to, do you want to speak to that?
I'm happy to answer questions, or I can talk about the process, whatever the board prefers.
It's not exactly a question, but just to clarify, we have lost our weather waiver, correct?
We have.
Which means that finals will be after the holidays, and we really don't have any control over that. Am I correct in that assumption?
That is correct. To qualify for the winter weather waiver, we have to miss eight full days of school during four of the last 10-year period, and we have not done so. So we are having to begin one week later than we have the last couple of years. Thus, semester one ends after winter break. Looks like that we would plan to have exams, let's see, exams would be the week of January 10, or January 10, so it allows students to return from winter break and have one week for review and then be ready to complete first semester. Thank you. It's a shame we can't get a decent snow.
You know, and because of the way we've done remote instruction so well, I can't imagine districts even qualifying for winter waivers in the future.
I'm wondering if we'll see some legislation that will better determine, because last year, and the calendar that we're operating off right now, we had special legislation to include remote learning. We are now going back to the 2012 law to follow for the calendar until we hear differently.
All right, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item on the agenda is Estes Elementary Three Classroom Edition Project: Approval of Construction Manager at Risk and Acceptance of the GMP. Is it the gross national part?
It's the guaranteed
Minimum price.
Maximum price.
Thank you. Uh-huh.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to speak to this item somewhat, given the pleasure of joining your meeting tonight, which I don't often get.
No, I should have introduced you, sorry.
Always happy to be here. That's okay. I have been working over the last several months with Mr. Fairley, your Director of Facilities, in planning to derive several different C-MAR, that's a Construction Manager at Risk contract, that's a delivery method for building construction that you're allowed to engage in in North Carolina. This first one, and again, happy to answer any questions, is for a fairly, as these things go, a fairly simple addition of a three-room, three-classroom addition to Estes Elementary. We have, again, fine-toothed combed the whole thing, and Tim and I have been through quite a process with those folks and are happy to recommend your approval of it tonight.
Okay, questions from the board? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Next item on the agenda is the Entrance and Lobby Reconfiguration Project: Approval of Construction Manager at Risk and Architect Contract. Are there questions for Mr. Fairley or our attorney?
Madam Chair, just one brief introduction for that matter. That's a slightly different approach that we are taking because you have in 44 some-odd school buildings, need to examine whether or not there is a need, and then to put together budget figures and how to carry out a budget, a construction process in each of those buildings to address security functions. So what we've done here is, rather than the Estes Elementary C-MAR agreement we just went through, which is a one-off that says we've got our architect and our C-MAR for this one construction project, what we have done is recouch that same kind of agreement for an architect and a construction manager at risk team that will do that evaluation for each and every one of your schools. The projects are going to range in size from small to very large. We don't really know until they begin to investigate how much work is needed to, you know, bring security up to where we'd like it. So what you'll see with this, Tim and I think that this is going to go on for years and years under this same structure. So this same, projects under these same contracts will come back to the board over and over again. One thing to look out for is that because of the nature of the subject, that we're talking about security of your buildings, and the fact that for reasons that are unfortunately very obvious to us these days, those items are not always public record. The plans themselves, it doesn't make any sense to make you produce those as a public record, and you're entitled as a board to go into closed session and review safety components of plans. So when projects come up, you won't see a whole lot of public-facing documents that show exactly what all of our plans are. The board will have an opportunity to review all of those in closed session, but you'll see this sort of thing that will set the size of the project, the cost, and how it's funded and so forth.
Did I miss anything, Tim?
Madam Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Fairley. Is that okay?
We're certainly not going to let him get away with that.
So this is for one school, Oakley, and it will be done during the summer, as makes sense for entrance and lobby reconfig, we can't be doing that during the school year, but as we've said, they're 40-some-odd schools. Is it just going to be one a summer, and this is going to take us 40-some-odd years? Or is this going to speed up?
Well, I believe it will speed up. Of course, it's a function of funding and priorities, but this is really our first project, and we're treating it kind of like a prototype to go through the process and probably tweak the next one. It probably won't be perfect. It's going to get us close, but this will really give us a good working understanding of the conditions, the building code requirements, because sometimes there's a conflict between security and getting people out of the building, which can be, you know, detrimental to security. So it's a real work in progress, working with our fire marshal, building department, with our security consultant, and really with a contractor and an architect trying to put together a project that can be done over a very short time in a very volatile and competitive construction market. So we're just going to do one this summer.
But we don't anticipate that I will be in my 90s when we finish this.
I'm not going to guarantee that.
And the beauty of this approach is that rather than reinvent the wheel every single time, you go and have, you know, some architectural work done, and then figure out what it's going to cost, and then go find a C-MAR, Tim has conceived this in a way that lets you have that team already in place to have a shot of not, of this not taking 40-some-odd years. And so that's part of the reason for this approach.
But there are two separate things we're looking at. The first one we're looking at isn't referencing Oakley Elementary. Am I correct in that?
The generic contract, really, the overriding contract, you need to approve that before you actually approve the project.
And there's no need to do anything from a financial standpoint in that contract, or is there? Because contract says to me that there's something more than just an agreement that involves some level of money, and I'm curious as to what that is, because I don't see that in the memo. Or does that just come with each project, it gets built into the individual project?
They will be built in as appendix items to this contract as we go through each one.
Each individual project.
So the unique characteristics of each project will then, you know, modify or be added to, but this is kind of the boilerplate. It sets the parameters for fees and responsibilities, and if you approve that overriding structure, then your next item is to entertain the prototype project that will actually get done, that has the terms and conditions of that project.
And, Mr. Bryant, so our approach with financing is for, you know, Tim will work within budgeted funds to do the initial work of engaging the same team so that they'll be also the ones that carry out the actual construction when it happens, to do initial design work, to explore what exactly kind of budget we're looking at, because it may then require, there may be some of these that are small enough, if you're just replacing a couple of doors, you probably have that in your yearly capital outlay budget. But if it's something that's going to require the whole, you know, facade of the building to come down and be moved and be reconfigured, it may be much, much more, in which case Tim knows at that point, we have a task in front of us to go seek School Capital Funding Commission approval and county approval of funds, or maybe even
Lottery funding.
Purchase, installment purchase funding.
4042 money is where you anticipate seeing the planning
That's correct. The planning and budgeting, and that's what, why a C-MAR is involved, because they can work directly with the architect and our folks to give us a good budget number that we can then make a determination whether we want to tap, like you said, lottery, Article 4042, Article 39, or maybe go after some grants and such.
Got you. Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Madam Chair, and if I could just mention, if you remember, the TRC assessment data that we received will help us navigate the schools to come based on their need and based on availability of funding.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is the Entrance and Lobby Reconfigurations Project to Accept the GMP and Authorize C-MAR an Architect to Proceed with the Prototype Project. Any questions for Mr. Fairley at this juncture? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. At this time, I would apologize to Mr. Henning, our attorney, for not introducing him to the group tonight, and as you can tell, his forte is with construction, and we do appreciate him being here with us, and I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorneys don't know how to handle kindness, so I don't know what to make of that, but thank you nonetheless.
If it's kindness, they're just, oh, hang my head. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and these are minutes from February 25, 2021, special call to work session, minutes from February 25, 2021, special call meeting, minutes from March 4, 2021, regular meeting, minutes from March 17, 2021, special call minutes from March 4, 2021, regular meeting, minutes from March 17, 2021, special called meeting, the personnel report as amended, and the policy to be rescinded is Policy 445, selling items in school. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Information Agenda is, you have financial reports, policies for first reading, Policy 7335, employee social media, Policy 7560, permitted salary deductions for absences and discipline of exempt employees, Policy 7620, payroll deductions, Policy 8510, school finance officer. Also, in the announcements of future meetings, our next meeting is going to be May 6, 2021, at 12:30 PM in the Minitorium. The next board meeting, regular meeting, will be held on May 6, with a work session and updates beginning at 4:00, and the board meeting in here at 5:30 PM. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.